Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Special Meeting of April 15, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Present.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Holman? Absent. Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
And Mayor Heikala?
I am here. Thank you, ma'am. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is proclamations. First of these is a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Norman. I need to entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Norman. Excuse me. Whereas fair housing is the law of the state of Oklahoma and is consistent with the principle of equality and justice for all, and whereas the freedom to choose a dwelling has been one of the one held precious in America throughout the centuries, and whereas the equal housing opportunity is a right guaranteed to all Americans under the Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Act, and whereas April 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the federal fair housing law, also known as Title VIII of Civil Rights Act of 68, and whereas the month of April symbolizes a significant milestone for all Americans to rededicate themselves to this country and the state of Oklahoma's underlying premise that all citizens be guaranteed the freedom of choice and the state publicly reaffirms its policy to eliminate all vestiges of housing discrimination wherever they may exist, and whereas Oklahoma's housing industry and governmental entities are united in the common goal of providing safe and sanitary housing for all without regard to race, color, religion, sex, national origin, age, or handicap, or familial status. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. Who's going to pick up the... Lisa?
I think I'm a member of...
It doesn't have that there.
Mayor and council at this time welcome Mary and Lorena from Metro Fair Housing. They are our partners with the block grant program and provision of fair housing services for the city of Norman.
Would you like to speak to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, we accept this proclamation on behalf of our founder Kathy Solofsky, who was a survivor of the Mueller Center bombing. Kathy founded Metro in 1978. She survived the bombing but passed away three years later. We honor her memory. We keep her mission alive for safe, open, and decent housing. And on behalf of the thousands of Oklahomans and many, many hundreds of Normans we've served for the past 47 years, we thank you so much.
Item number two, a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming the week of April 21 through 25, 2025, as National Community Development Week in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the week of April 21 through 25, 2025, is a National Community Development Week in the city of Norman. Whereas the week of April 21 through 25 has been designated as a National Community Development Week to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program, and whereas the CDBG and home programs provide annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide a decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people, and whereas over the past four years our community has received a total of $3,771,628 in CDBG and $1,669,992 of home investment partnerships funds, and has funded a variety of projects that have directly benefited our citizens and neighborhoods. Excuse me. And whereas the CDBG and home programs are a versatile funding source that helps us revitalize our neighborhoods and improve our citizens' lives. Locally, every dollar of these funding sources leverages $4 in additional private investment. Countless projects within Norman would not have been possible without these federal investments. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim that the city of Norman designates the week of April 21 through 25, 2025, as National Community Development Week in support of these valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and the economic well-being of our community. Please join me in celebrating the successes of these programs and their impact to our community during the 2025 National Community Development Week. I recognize Ms. Lisa Craig. You bid.
Thank you, mayor, council. As the CDBG manager for the city of Norman, I am... I thank you for this opportunity to be able to kind of have a little parade about our program. As you can... As the mayor said, over the 51 years of this program, the improvements that have been made and the lives that have been changed are immeasurable. We can put numbers on it to give you just a little bit of information about what we've done so far this year that has made a personal impact on the community. We have completed 35 projects for low-income citizens. They range from replacing a roof, a sewer line, heat and air accessibility modifications to allow people to remain in their homes. These were all done at no cost to these people. The average age of the recipients were 69 years old, and the amount of the average cost of each project was almost $10,000. And that's just since July. We've also been integral in allowing three neighborhoods to really spread their wings and become formally organized. It has brought a lot of citizen voices to the process that we have going on. It's something that over the tenure that I have had, that it's really been hit and miss. And so we're really kind of hitting our stride with engagement of the citizens. And so I'd just like to take you... Take the opportunity to thank you all for this, the ability to continue to administer the program. Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start with Ward Eight. And the seven's not here, sir?
No announcements forward six.
No announcements this week.
Ward, I'm going to break the streak. Good evening, Ward Four and city of Norman. Early last week, some of us were in Washington, DC to lobby our legislators on my agenda, connecting with our congress members about workforce housing and HUD funding. Then late last week, I celebrated my 24-year anniversary with Lance Grant with a trip to northwest Oklahoma. I'll be making my way through my inbox, so thank you for your patience. Since we don't take public comment on the consent docket, I would like to highlight item 14, a contract between the city of Norman and Mental Health Association Oklahoma for the administration of a Better Way Opportunity Knox program. This has been something that's been in the works for years. We are using our opioid abatement settlement money to help fund this. Under this program, a city-owned van will operate three days per week, collecting up to eight participants per day from various locations within Norman for the Day Labor Beautification Initiative. Priority for participation will be first given to individuals experiencing or recovering from OUD, SUD, and/or co-occurring mental health conditions. Participants will be transported to predetermined city-owned sites to perform community beautification tasks such as litter removal. They will receive wages for their labor, meals, and opportunities for engagement with a case manager and employment specialist who will offer wraparound social services, connections to care, and employment support. Additionally, the case manager and employment specialist will have flexibility to interact with participants outside the scheduled work activities, facilitating services in public spaces and other convenient locations. The agreement includes an initial one-year term with provisions for up to four additional one-year renewals for a maximum of five years. MHAO will oversee daily operational activities, including transportation, supervision, wage payments, and coordination of social services. Required reporting includes monthly and annual updates on participant outcomes related to performance metrics for program evaluation. The total contract amount for the first year is $383,633, and will primarily fund it through the city's opioid settlement funds, as mentioned earlier. Last, Old Silk Stocking is participating in Norman Earth Day neighborhood cleanup events. Join neighbors at 10:00 a.m. in Ruth Uptergraph Park, Peters and Acres to get cleanup supplies. They'll work till noon and then gather for lunch at the Staudtard, and that is happening this Saturday from 10 to noon, Old Silk Stocking neighborhood. Thank you.
I just wanted to highlight, based on Councilmember Grant's recognition of item number 14, this was brought about with the relentless pursuit of success by one Michelle Loudonbeck and her ongoing efforts to help improve the stormwater situation in Norman, to improve litter cleanup, and to take full advantage of a relatively small revenue stream that will come to Norman over the next handful of years. And we were honestly scratching our heads, thinking about the best way to put those dollars to their intended use here in Norman. And we also had a couple of staff members in Mr. Knighton's office that helped bring this to fruition. And we appreciate your consideration of this opportunity. It's been a heavy lift, but we have very powerful lifters on staff. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Okay. Well, good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I do not have any announcements tonight.
No announcements for Ward Two. Thank you.
Councilmember?
If you have a Friday trash service pickup, it is finally our turn for spring cleanup. So make sure you have everything out on the curb by this Friday. And the last thing is that spring is here, school's starting to wrap up, sun's staying out a whole lot longer. So we're all out doing a whole lot more. Our kids are outside a lot more. So, you know, just be cognizant, be safe, watch how you drive. We have an amazing, amazing public transportation system here. So, you know, Uber, with everything available, there's no reason that everybody can drive. There's a lot more people just out and about. So, you know, just watch out for your neighbors, keep an eye out on your neighborhood. If you want a safe neighborhood, it takes all of us. So if you see something suspicious, it takes two seconds. The police, never mind, just driving by and checking something out. So if you see something, say something, and that's it.
Mayor has no announcements. Next item on the agenda is consent docket. Excuse me. This item is placed on the agenda so that city council by unanimous consent can designate these routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that item three through item 15, with the exception of items 16 and 17, be placed on the consent docket. I'm going to edit. I just read. I'll read that again. Staff recommends that item three through item 15 be placed on the consent docket.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Motion on the floor is to place items three for 15 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been placed items three through 15 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion second. Any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Thank you, ma'am.
I didn't have my microphone on. I'm sorry, but that passed unanimously if you didn't hear.
Item number 16, a resolution amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove property located in 36th Avenue Northwest from the low-density residential designation and place the same in the office designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution?
Motion approved.
Have a motion and second. Is there a representative applicant here? Would you come up, sir?
John Dell. We're just looking to change from the current zoning of agricultural to an office. It's a half-acre lot. Agricultural doesn't really fit much on half-acre anymore. And we're looking to put an office there. Well, we were originally going to do a construction and dental office, but due to the dumpster enclosure requirements for Norman, that won't fit. So I don't know what we're going to do now. So we're still looking to maybe put a dental office there. We'll see. It's a very tight lot, and trash comes first in Norman, so.
We had one signed up, but he is not here, Trey Kirby, so we'll move on to council comments.
Any comments from council? Councilmember Peacock?
I was going to ask you some questions, but is there a site plan included in the agenda anywhere?
Yeah, it was submitted at the last two meetings. Shows a give-or-take 3,000-foot office building. It's about all we can accommodate on that lot due to the trash enclosure and turnaround requirements of the truck.
Really, my question was going to be centered around stormwater and, you know, what your plan was, what your solution was to kind of...
Right now, we've gotten a temporary approval from the homeowners association to the north. As long as the drainage study works out, they said they would allow us to use their detention pond as our detention pond. Yet again, if we can't do that, this property's not really... There's not enough room for trash enclosure and stormwater, so.
Councilmember Dixon?
I was just going to make the comment that there were no protests. I went to the planning commission meeting on this. There was a lot more information there. There were no protests by any of the neighboring homeowners. So there's been no protest at all.
Thank you. Any further council comments from council or questions from council? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 17. Yes. An ordnancy zoning property located at 271036 Northwest from A2 Rural Agricultural District to place the same in the O1 Office Institutional District and providing the severability thereof. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and second. It's companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council? Okay. Any speakers? No. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Second.
Have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. The ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 18, a resolution amending the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan so as to remove property located at 2919 Classen Boulevard and 1500 from the commercial designation and place the same in institutional designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion?
Second.
Sir, representative of the applicant?
Good evening. Colton Wayman with Wallace Design representing Life Church. This is a rezoning to PUD. Life Church purchased 2919 Classen late last year in hopes of adding a driveway off of Classen. As of right now, they only have access off of Imhoff Road. And that Life Church property is owned PUD at this time, and it only allows for church uses. The property that they recently purchased is zone C2, so it allows for a whole bunch of different commercial uses. This PUD proposes to only allow for church uses on 2919 Classen. I did want to mention, this is an ODOT-maintained roadway. We've been coordinating with them. And it's... We've concluded that a ride-in, ride-out is what ODOT is comfortable with. So that's what we've designed for. It's in your packet, the site plan with that design. And I also wanted to mention pre-development. It went really well. We had the neighboring property owner to the northeast of the church who was excited about the potential of reducing traffic off Imhoff, especially during Sunday services or concluding Sunday services and that sort of thing. We also had representatives from Hitachi that were there, and they also were fine with the proposal and happy with everything. They were also happy to hear that it could reduce traffic as well. The last thing I wanted to mention is there was a sign plan that did not make it in your packets in time. That's it right there. And the only difference to that compared to what is in your packet is a five-foot increase and maybe a little bit wider in width. But we were made aware by staff that there would need to be... That would need to be included in the motion if it was to be considered for approval. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Peacock?
Either one. I just wanted to ask about... So on the site plan, all the existing paving and parking, all that is existing, right?
That's correct. There's nothing proposed on the existing church property.
And then I see that there's a... It looks like there's a swale or drainage channel along the road out by Classen that you're building the new drive over. I assume that'll be maintained, that...
Yeah, we're adding a culvert under there, so yeah.
Thank you.
So it's going over what the uses are. It just says church, temple, or other place of worship. Nothing else?
Yeah, just church uses and anything related to church activities is what is allowed in the PUD.
Okay. And then it was saying it was like 50% impervious coverage on this?
Yeah, that's the max, the maximum that they would be able to have impervious on that entire lot. And I think that lot's like 20-ish acres, somewhere around there.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Madam Amanda will come up on our next item. Any further?
To amend?
Did I ask you about members of the public? Motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers? You may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 19, an ordnancy zoning property located at 2919 Classen Boulevard and 1500 East Imhoff Road from the C2 General Commercial District and PUD Planned Unit Development District and place same in a PUD, Planned Unit Development District and providing the Development District and providing the severability thereof. I need a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion.
This is a companion item to the previous item, and I'll entertain a motion to amend the PUD narrative to change the sign height from fifteen feet to twenty feet.
Second.
I need a motion. We'll get it. Thank you. Now... Any public comments? None signed up? All right. Any final comments from council? Yes.
The trees? It says landscaping trees preservation. All landscaping shall comply with the requirements outlined in the City of Norman zoning ordinance. But I didn't really see anything about existing trees on the plans to keep or remove any.
At all with the new driveway that's being put in.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
All right. The motion on the floor is to amend the PUD narrative to change the sign height from fifteen feet to twenty feet. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to amend the PUD narrative to change the sign height from fifteen to twenty passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comments on the ordinance as amended on second reading, section by section? Seeing none. Most on the floor says amended on second reading, section by section. Council members, you can, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance as amended upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as a whole.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. A motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as a whole. Council members?
And as amended as well.
As amended. You want me to reread it? Okay. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to adopt the ordinance as amended upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Colton already left. Must've missed the sheet. No, I didn't. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address City Council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for miscellaneous discussion?
We do, Mayor. We have one speaker, Mr. Dan Munson.
Good evening, I'm Dan Munson from Ward Six. It's exciting that the City of Norman continues to grow in population. However, I'm concerned about the accuracy of the AIM Master Plan and its growth estimate over the next twenty years. In the past four to five years, Norman has only grown five to six hundred people annually. The AIM Master Plan is stating that our city will grow over twenty-seven hundred people annually. The City of Norman recently paid the Matrix Consulting Group to provide a public safety study, and in their study, they're estimating for Norman to grow twelve-hundred-and-seventy-five people annually. Selecting a population projection should represent a data-driven decision that is the cornerstone of long-range planning efforts. One of the major pitfalls to avoid is adopting a population projection based on the desired outcome rather than the projected grounded and reliable data and historical trends. Overly optimistic forecasts can result in long-term infrastructure commitments that run the risk of undermining other local priorities. Overestimating population can lead to unnecessary expansion into green spaces negatively impacting the environment. Overestimating growth may result in an oversupply of housing, driving down property values. If the AIM Master Plan isn't adjusted to represent a reasonable and somewhat accurate population, it could go down as the worst population projection in the history of our city. I ask you to not move forward and vote for the plan in its current format. So with AIM, we've heard the forecast of eleven-hundred-and-thirty-four homes annually. With the Matrix study, it's stating five-hundred-and-thirty-one homes. That is a huge delta. If you look at page one-seventy-four in the AIM study, it says that the population today in Norman, Oklahoma is a hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty. It's not, it's a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. How could we be off almost seven thousand people on the year that this is getting published? That is a major, major concern. We need to get it right, and we need to get it right on day one. Thank you.
All right. Well, council, it's been swell, but we are adjourned. That's too, not as fast as last time.